Good morning and welcome to the November 5th, oh boy. That was a Freudian slip. It's not November 5th, although perhaps at least one of us wishes that it was. November 4th, 2008, meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. I apologize for that. Please stand and join the board and I as we salute the flag and they remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we jump into item number one on our agenda, I've had a request for a 30-second statement by the auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector et al., as I call her title, and I think she has to go work somewhere, so...
After the consent calendar, yes.
I would give her an opportunity to speak this morning.
I'm Rita Woodard, I'm also the registrar of voters and today I'm here for that purpose. Would like to remind all people, please go and vote today. It is very important that even though the front page article on the newspaper yesterday said that it was one in X amount of billions that your vote would count for precedent or not, we believe every vote counts and particularly it is most important in the local elections. There have been many elections where one or two votes has made the difference as to whether a bond passes or fails or one person is chosen or not chosen for local offices. So we appreciate it very much if everyone would go and vote today. We also would like to thank the board for all their support through the years for the Elections Office. The facility down there has proved to be especially important this year. The line was out the door yesterday for early voters and we thought we had plenty of room in that lobby, but I can imagine how it would have been in the basement of the courthouse if we were still there. So we really appreciate the quarters down there and the government plaza. So thank you all very much.
Thank you Rita. Okay, we will move to item number one on our agenda this morning, which is to designate Saturday, November 15th, 2008 as National Adoption Day to support the goals and ideals of National Adoption Day as a collective national effort to raise awareness of the 129,000 children in foster care waiting to find permanent loving families. And good morning.
Good morning Chairman, members of the board. Nice to see you again. Juliette Webb?
It is. We used to see you on a daily basis in our hallway until someone talked you into leaving us, but we'll leave that conversation for another time.
Okay. Well, thanks for having me back this morning. Honored to be here to speak to you in regards to National Adoption Day. Again Juliette Webb, Division Manager for Child Welfare Services and Health and Human Services Agency. Last week, your board took the opportunity to recognize November as Court Adoption and Permanency Month. And keeping with that same spirit, we wanted to take the opportunity to come before your board today to recognize Saturday, November 15th as National Adoption Day. Just a little history about National Adoption Day. It was first observed eight years ago with the goal of finalizing as many adoptions as possible on a historic day and to raise awareness for the children who are in foster care waiting to be adopted, waiting adoption. Currently that number stands at 129,000 nationwide. National Adoption Day is an opportunity to come together to celebrate and honor all who adopt and to encourage others to adopt children in foster care. Tulare County Adoptions works very hard to find permanency for Tulare County foster children evidenced by we finalized over 200 adoptions last year for children in foster care. In honor of National Adoption Day, Tulare County Adoptions will be hosting a celebratory event to honor all of those in Tulare County who did adopt on Thursday, November 13th. A spiranet is one of our community partners who also assists us in finding permanency for foster youth. They're co-hosting the event and we're going to have Build-A-Bears and books passed out to the children and families who attend the event. Now this morning, we were fortunate enough to have two of our recent adoptive families join us to say a few words. They have recently opened their hearts in their homes and adopted foster children in Tulare County and they'd like to share a few words about how their choice to adopt has impacted their lives. First, I'll call up the Renzi family. Nino and Jennifer Renzi and their children, Brooklyn, Ezra and Michael. The Renzis' adoption of Ezra and Michael was finalized this last July, July 25th, 2008. So I'll give them an opportunity to speak briefly.
Thank you so much for being here this morning.
Good morning, thank you. Well, we just wanted to briefly share our story. Shortly after we were married, we started trying to have children and we tried for a few years, no luck. And we knew we wanted to have children, it just wasn't option to not have children. We also had talked about adopting and we knew that we wanted to adopt at some point in our lives, we just didn't know how big of a role it would play in our lives. We looked into adoption and infertility treatments and we started both of them at the same time. We started filling out adoption papers at the same time we were going to doctor's appointments and we just went on for about a year hoping that one of them would work and it did. On September 1st, 2006, 28 days before our fifth wedding anniversary, we received a phone call that there was a little boy for us to adopt. His name was Ezra and he was seven and a half months old. We loved him from the moment we saw him, we were thrilled. We were finally a mommy and a daddy to someone. It was a very exciting time and we were on top of the world. The next month, in October of 2006, we were scheduled to do our last planned infertility treatment. We never questioned going ahead and we never regretted it. On October 31st, 2006, I found out I was pregnant. We went about our glorious life with a baby boy and a new baby on the way. Things could not be any better. Then on January 11th, two days before my 29th birthday, we got another phone call from the adoption agency. One of the ladies we had worked with during Ezra's placement said they had a three-week-old baby boy who needed to be placed with a family. She told me that she felt inspired to call or to try calling me before calling a different family. She felt strongly that this baby needed to be with us. We questioned our ability to handle this, but we swallowed hard and said yes. I went to the office to meet with this little baby and my heart was pounding. I knew he was mine the moment I saw him. And two hours later, we had another son. Michael Andrew Renzi joined our family on that day and we never looked back. People thought we were crazy, they still do, and we wonder sometimes too. Six months after we got Michael, in July of '07, our daughter Brooklyn was born. We had an 18-month-old, a seven-month-old and a newborn. We went from no kids to three kids in nine months. The next year seemed to drag on forever as we had hearings and appointments waiting to finalize the adoption. Looking back now, the time flew, but that was a long year. On July 25th, the boy's adoption was finalized. It was the day we had longed for, a day we celebrated. They were ours officially. Looking back now, it seems like such a blur, it just seems like a big confusion and I almost wish we could go through it again just to experience everything. We're so grateful for the experience we had, for all the people that we met. We wouldn't be here today as a family if it wasn't for so many social workers and case workers, RNs, and so many people helping us. We've developed a lot of special bonds and friendships and we have three beautiful children and a lot of wonderful memories and we wouldn't change anything. Do you want to say anything?
I think my wife summed it up pretty well. Going from no kids to three kids in nine months, people always thought that, how is that possible? And they just couldn't understand, you know, oh, so you guys adopt? Yeah, I don't like the word adoption. I don't, they're my own kids, I treat them the same way. I don't feel any different about them whatsoever. I was going to do a slideshow, it was going to be about 10, 15 minutes. My mom and my wife told me I only had three minutes, so I just passed that. I'm a visual person, I don't do speeches, I don't do talks. I don't know if you guys can see some of these pictures. They really didn't, some of these pictures, they didn't even pose for them, you know, it's so, when Ezra gives Michael a kiss on the cheek or they're hugging, it's, you know, to me, it's just a really wonderful thing. Christmas and every year, it's just a really exciting thing with them. We're really excited, we're very happy. Like my wife said, I wouldn't trade any of these moments for anything else and I really wish I could do them all over again. They grow up so fast. You really miss a lot of wonderful events. I try to take pictures and record everything, but my computer's running out of space. Thank you again, appreciate it and we're very excited.
Thank you so much. The only quick question I have is, does Ezra want to speak to us? Uh-oh.
That was quiet.
Yeah. Okay, morning Ezra. Thank you guys so much. Michael wants to speak?
Say thank you.
So cute. Thank you guys so much, not only for being here with us this morning to tell us your story, but for opening your hearts. It's wonderful.
Thank you so much for coming. Another family who wanted to come today to share their story are the Parkers. Richard and Beverly. Beverly and Richard, come on, Carter, I'm sorry. Richard and Beverly adopted Joshua, Tommy, Joe and Tough. That was finalized on March 28th, 2008.
Right.
Hi, Brother Carters. And we took them, our story is different. We came out of foster care because, you know, the bad background of the family being with drugs, you know, and everything, and so they were in foster care. And so then, but once we got on the adoption side, it was like so much better. And I want to thank Felicity Moreno and Allison Hendricks and Rudy Berry and everybody's been really good to us. The opportunities for these guys are just so much better. You know, we have a small ranch out in Woodlake and we've done the Woodlake Lions Rodeo Parade. The boys won first place in the youth division in the parade and Joshua and Tommy go to Camp There's just so many more opportunities for them and so that's what we want to be, you know, thinking of and trying to put them out there. And also once Allison called last spring and asked would Joshua like to go to Camp Tulacoya up at the YMCA camp? And, I mean, he loved it. He didn't want to come home, he thought it was a good thing. So there's just so much more opportunities and if people could help, you know, other kids adopt and, you know, give them the opportunities that are out there because for some of these kids, there's just no opportunities. They just need to know that there's a big world out there and so these guys, it's been very busy for us. We got them when the baby was, this one here was 18 months and this one was two and a half and they were still in diapers and, you know, we were very, very busy. So they're all, he's in preschool now, in preschool and first grade and fourth grade and everybody's doing well, so a ranch is a good place to raise some kids. So, but we're the actual grandparents and so, you know, we keep them out of foster care, that was our situation. And I'm trying to get that room over at the foster care court, it's standing room only. It's just, it's just an epidemic of grandparents taking in their kids. But you got to be a parent, you know? So anyway, that's what we wanted to come and say, so we're all very happy.
Thank you so much. Did your husband want to speak or is he, no? Okay. Well, we really appreciate you coming down. What a handsome, good-looking group of gentlemen with you and very, so well behaved. Thank you for being here with us this morning. We really appreciate it. Okay, we do have a proclamation to present today and I've actually asked Supervisor Cox to do that. Supervisor Cox probably has his own story to tell.
I'm going to tell one more story if I can have a couple of minutes to do that. My wife and I have had five sons about two years, you know, apart and...
It's a big group.
It's a big group. And so for the, about two years, we went through a private adoption agency. My wife wanted to have a little girl and so we looked at probably hundreds and had several little girls into our home for a night through the foster care program. And then someone told us about, and this was many years ago, called the FOSTA-ADOPT Program. And so we went to classes with Tulare County to become foster parents with the specific purpose of getting a little girl that we could adopt. And we, you know, we told our caseworker that we just want a little girl, we don't care, you know, what mix she is, we just want a little girl. And so on Thanksgiving Day of 1988, and this is amazing, Thanksgiving Day at 9:00 AM, we received a call from our caseworker on Thanksgiving Day and she said, "How would you like a Thanksgiving surprise?" And we said absolutely. And so at about 10:30 on Thanksgiving Day of 1988, our caseworker drove up and brought our daughter with her. And at that time, she was about 15 months old and we had a 15-month-old son at the same time. And so people thought they were, for years, thought they were twins. And today, my daughter is 5'11 1/2" and my son, who is the same age as 6'5", so they no longer think that they're twins, but for many years, they did. The same social worker, our caseworker, continued to call us every month telling us, "We have another baby, we have another baby." And we kept saying, "No, no, no, six is enough." And after about six or seven months of that, I finally said, "Don't call anymore. Just please don't call because it tears our hearts apart. Every time you call, we have to tell you no." Well, a year and a half went by and it actually took us three years before we could finalize the adoption. It was under an old system where the parents were given chance after chance after chance to reunify and, you know, about two years went by with no phone calls and out of the blue, after my wife and I had talked about the possibility, well, maybe we ought to try to get another little girl because we think we can take care of another girl. And we just dismissed the thought and said, "Well, you know, we're probably not qualified anymore, we haven't kept our home steady, we haven't kept, you know, in contact with our caseworkers, so we'll just forget it." About a week after that, we received a phone call from our caseworker and she says, "We have a five-week-old baby girl who needs a home today." And my wife and I looked at each other and said, "Yes, we'll take her." And so we went to Pixley Supervisor Conway and we picked up a five-week-old baby girl who was just barely six pounds at five weeks old and was having withdrawal problems, symptoms and tremors and things of that nature. And so we picked up our second daughter and it was just an amazing change that's made in our lives. Now, I've known the Renzis for many, many years and I can remember when they brought Ezra to church for the first time. And we knew they'd been trying to adopt and it was so exciting to see that family and it's a family experience. It just wasn't them, but to see the whole family rally around them and how bright and excited everybody was to see that new baby come into that family. And yes, we did think they were crazy when they had three babies, you know, all in that nine-month period, but to see that family now and what they've grown to is amazing. So if I can meet you in the pit here, Julia, we'll present you with this proclamation.
Here it is. I'll leave it on my desk.
It gives me great pleasure to present this proclamation, designate November 15th, 2008 as National Adoption Day. I'm not going to read it, I think the stories have been told, which states our case best, but the board supervisors is proud and glad to designate this day as National Adoption Day in Tulare County.
Thank you Supervisor Cox for doing that and for sharing with us and also thank you once again to the families that were here and those of you that let us know your story. And it looks like everybody's going back to the ranch, doing a little work. Oh, okay. I guess it is an action item, gentlemen, designating the day.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Cast your votes please. Okay, motion passes unanimously. So that we can release some folks here, I'd like to go to the consent calendar, items four through 17.
Move approval.
Second.
Cast your votes please.
Correction on item eight, just for the public agreement that was adopted, it's not the agreement that was posted on the, the agreement that was adopted was not the agreement that was posted on the web. There were some slight changes made at the request of UAW, but there was no substantive change. Oh, I'm sorry, that's the addendum, I apologize.
Thank you Madam Counsel.
Two, I'm the addendum.
We're back to our vote and it would appear that the consent calendar passes unanimously, so thank you for that. Okay, I think next we're moving to our addendum agenda. Item one, from Human Resources and Development. Mr. Huntley's presenting.
Madam Chancellor, consent, item, all motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
But is this the one that needs to be corrected?
That's correct.
Okay. Are you adding the corrections to that, sir?
As amended.
Okay.
That was my dumping the gun thing there.
I'm not confused. Everybody cast their vote, motion passes unanimously. All right, now I guess we will move to addendum item number two. I apologize for the confusion. Hopefully we're on track. Once again, this is a request from Human Resources and Development.
I believe there is a proposed script for the presentation on impasse resolution from the chair.
Well, I suppose that would be a good thing if we could locate it.
My turn?
Great, thank you. But he got the memo, but me. Item two, it's now before the board. This item comes to be forced to resolve a bargaining impasse between the county and the Government Lawyers Association of Workers. Numerous bargaining sessions have failed to bring about an agreement. It is the duty of this board to decide how to resolve the impasse. Procedure will be as follows. The GLAW, the Government Lawyers Association of Workers, heretofore referred to as GLAW, representatives and the county negotiator may each speak for 10 minutes. We'll then allow public comment on the item for those that wish to speak to it. Under our rules of procedure, each speaker will be permitted to speak for up to three minutes. The total comment period will be limited to 15 minutes. The GLAW representative and the county negotiator may then each speak for five minutes in rebuttal. I ask for the representative for GLAW to identify themselves. Is that Mr. Soltes?
Good morning, my name's Paul Greco.
Okay, Paul. I would, just for informational purpose, let you know that we will be timing that. If a board member asks a question, we won't make up for that time, we'll make sure we give you your time. And so with that, we will begin.
Good morning, my name, as I stated earlier, is Paul Greco. I am the president of GLAW and I first wanted to address a couple of the goals of GLAW. One is reduce turnover. The second is to create a more experienced and effective pool of government attorneys. And finally, the goal that I think all of us can share is effectively and efficiently administer justice in Tulare County. As everyone knows, the case law and the statutory law in the state of California is becoming increasingly complex. This is especially true in regards to murder cases and gang prosecution. And as everyone's aware who reads the Viso Times Delta, the gang problem in Tulare County is certainly an issue that's confronting our entire community. Yet, how have we equipped ourselves to deal with the gang problem in our community? Eighty percent of the attorneys working for this county have less than five years of But the distressing numbers do not stop there. Over the last 10 years, pursuant to the county's own numbers, 139 district attorneys have left the office. Over the last five years, 66 district attorneys have left. Ladies and gentlemen, that is over one DA leaving per month, leaving this county, taking employment elsewhere. We calculate the district attorney turnover rate annually is 24%. Now, there is a question, well, how busy are the district attorneys and how busy are the government attorneys that handle the criminal calendar? Just this morning, I processed on, from the California government, public records, Tulare County, between the last year where data was available, in 2006 to 2007 fiscal year, there was 5,692 felony filings. How do we compare to our counties around us? Kings County filed approximately 2,000 cases. Merced County filed 3,500. Madera, 2,100. And Ventura County, a county in which numerous district attorneys and public defenders have left Tulare County to go to, they file even less of 4,600. And some, we file almost more, we file more, accepting of course Kern County and Fresno County, more cases than any of the comparable counties. What's happened with these cases that district attorneys have called upon by the community to prosecute? And what's happened with those cases that public defenders have been called upon to resolve or to defend? Out of those 5,692 cases filed, only 1,455 cases have been resolved or disposed. That is the second worst. and fifty-five cases have been resolved or disposed. That is the second worst in the Central Valley. What does this data show us? It shows the direct effect of attorney turnover. Every single time an attorney leaves our office, leaves the public defender's office, that case must go to someone. It must go to usually an attorney with less experience who already has his own caseload. And that attorney must reread the entire case file, must re-interview the clients, must talk to the witnesses and victims again, and basically start from scratch. And we see this number borne out in continuances of cases. But ladies and gentlemen of the Board, how does that really translate into dollars and cents? It translates because Sheriff Bill Whitman must keep defendants in custody while we continue to dilly-dally and have attorneys leave our county and cases get continued. Instead of criminal defendants having their cases resolved, having them removed out of custody and either transferred to state prison where the state pays for their in-custody status or put onto probation, we have defendants sitting in custody while the attorneys who represent them and while the attorneys who prosecute them leave our county for better wages and better benefits. There's a real question whether anyone would feel comfortable going to a hospital where eighty percent of the doctors in which you would see you have less than five years' experience. Would anyone feel comfortable seeing doctors and going to a medical clinic? One-fourth the office of that medical clinic leaves every I finally propose that when someone is arrested in a gang sweep, suppose that twenty people arrested with possession of firearms were doing a drive-by for attempted murder. How many days is that person kept in custody? Three, until the district attorney takes up the case and decides to file that case. And you know what happens with that case? Is that case sits in our criminal justice system with the district attorneys from the moment that we file that case until the moment we resolve it. It makes no sense to create a system of justice where we continue to pay for law enforcement and grant increases to them, but to not grant increases to those that defend them. Ladies and gentlemen, in these uncertain times as a stock market, this county can invest in a resource that we know, resource of the attorneys that work every day to uphold justice and to keep our safe streets safe. And I yield to my esteemed colleague.
Okay, thank you. My name's Roland Saltes and I'm Vice President of G-Law and I'm a deputy public defender. I've been working for Tulare County for about seven years. What I really wanted to do was go over the nuts and bolts of our office, what we're really talking about in dollars and cents. G-Law has proposed basically salary increase at all levels. Uh, you can see we have five different levels of attorneys. We're proposing from three to six percent. When we've done our salary surveys, in the county, uh, human resources people have admitted that we are paid competitively. Our salary is competitive at entry level. You have in your book a salary survey that shows if you look at all the different counties, the comparable salaries at the entry level are the same. What happens is after people have been here about two, three years, they start looking around saying, geez, they're paying thirty thousand dollars more in Kern County. I can make thirty-five thousand if I move to Ventura, forty thousand if I move to Riverside. It becomes a big problem. So, we're, we're competitive at the bottom, but we're not competitive at the top. That's why we're talking about putting a little bit more of the increase into the top end as opposed to the bottom end. In addition, most of our members, they move up quickly through the bottom level ranks, but once you get to a level four, you can be at that level for five years very easily. Um, what's really in contention here is we're looking at our benefit dollars, okay? G-Law's proposal is that we're going to have a freeze on our benefit dollars. We talked to the county and we realized that benefits is a big deal here. We sat, watched the SEIU negotiations. We realized benefits is a big deal. We are willing to freeze our benefit dollars. The question is really, how do you freeze our benefit dollars? Right now, negotiators for the county want all our benefit dollars frozen at level one of each classification. There's five different classifications. Each classification has five different grids. That means we really have twenty-five different classes of attorneys in Tulare County. Each one has an independent benefit calculation. What we're proposing is that each one of those classes stay the same. They will not go up for next year. What that does is if we look at the numbers here, um, we have a total salary under our proposal, as of nine twenty-five, two thousand eight, is seven point six million for our group. Um, our proposal would increase the salary by three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars, which is an overall percent increase of five point one-two percent. But we're foregoing almost forty thousand dollars in increased benefits under the current formula. So, the net effective increase for us would be approximately three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Um, the county proposal is level, excuse me, uh, which is option B. You're going to be presented with a bunch of different options. We're showing you option B here. We think that most closely resembles the grid that we're proposing. Under option B, um, you go from two to four percent, but you have a benefit freeze which is frozen at step one of the classifications and a bonus of one-time bonus of five hundred dollars per employee. What that does is that creates a wage increase of two hundred and ninety-two thousand with fifty thousand five hundred for bonuses. So, approximately three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars is allocated towards increased compensation. Um, what we're looking at under our give-backs is we're giving back thirty-nine thousand dollars in potential increases under our proposal. That's every year. Um, the county's proposal actually results in a benefit cut for over eighty-five percent of our members. What it really does is it restricts you to level one. It creates a two-tier, um, system of benefits that we think is, uh, it's, it works in cross purposes for retaining people. Let's see where I'm at on my time. I'm almost up. On the bottom line, we're really only fifty thousand dollars apart right now before our give-back. County's going to save thirty-nine thousand dollars each year, what we're talking about with our proposal. Um, after our thirty-nine thousand dollar give-back, the real loss, the real difference is only eleven thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Now, that difference is not including the benefit cut that the county is insisting on. We really consider the proposal, the freeze of benefits, as a cut because what it's doing is it's freezing people at levels, at level one of each category. Some people, if they move up to level five, if you're a five-five, you're going to get a different benefit amount. Some people currently have, uh, can I finish this last point?
Please, yes, certainly.
There's, there's several people in both offices. You could be here different amounts of time. Somebody could be in one of the offices and they could be, let's just say, a level three C attorney right now. They could have been here more time than somebody that's a level four B attorney. Once the person that's been here longer gets to be the time they're a four B attorney, their benefit dollars under the county proposal would be less than the person that was actually here less time. What our proposal is that whatever a four B is making right now, once you become a four B in the future, that benefit dollar's frozen. So, there will be twenty-five different benefit dollar amounts that are frozen. That results in a savings, approximately of thirty-nine thousand dollars next year to the county because our benefit pool, our benefit dollars are not going up. The only way as an attorney, your benefit dollars will go up, under our proposal, you go up the grid, a four B, a four C, a five A or five B. And that's in the future. That's next year. That's the year after that. We're freezing the dollars. We're separating benefit dollars from the, uh, the salary calculation. I- it's important to realize that when we take these jobs here, we look at how much we're going to make overall. We realize that the benefits is part of the calculation. We were promised a certain benefit dollar amount when we got here. As attorneys now, we realize situation that the county is in, but our proposal is a freeze, but it's just slightly different than what the county's proposal is. And what it does is it creates all the attorneys that are at the same level make the same pay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Saltes.
Um.
Mr. Huntley?
I'd like some clarification from Roland if I could, if I could get it.
Sure, no problem.
Um, I'm not quite following the, the freeze proposal. My understanding was the freeze proposal was freezing everybody at thirteen thousand dollars. Um, so I'm not sure what...
Well, technically, that's correct because you are frozen at thirteen thousand dollars under our proposal. But thirteen thousand dollars is the benefit amount that a level five E attorney receives right now. What that means is somebody that starts today as a level one A attorney will receive the benefit dollars as a level one A attorney. As they move up through the, the pay scales, it, once they're a level three C, let's say somebody becomes a level three C in two years, they would receive the benefit dollar amounts under our proposal is what a level three C receives this year. So, all the benefit dollar amounts will be frozen at two thousand eight levels. You would only get up to thirteen thousand dollars if you became a level five-five attorney. You would not get thirteen thousand. What we're not proposing is that you stay at thirteen thousand dollars and everybody in our group will eventually get to thirteen thousand dollars through increases. What we're proposing is that we freeze the benefit amount in two thousand eight dollars. What we're getting paid now, twenty-five different benefit calculations, which is attached to twenty-five different pay grades. As you move up, a four C gets what a four C gets this year. If you become a five D, you receive what a five D receives. Does that help clarify that?
Yeah.
I know we've sat in negotiations. We've had, uh, dry erase boards and we've been writing numbers down. So, this, our benefit system is fairly complicated and we're trying to uncomplicate it a little bit.
That, that is the understatement of, of, of the year.
And he said it so easily.
So, I, because I'm still not clear.
I mean, we do have an alternate proposal. We propose, but we don't want to get into that today.
Well, as I understand, if, if, I can say it the way I heard it and it makes, see if it makes sense to you.
And this is coming from another lawyer. Go ahead, Superintendent.
Well, it, it was that he, they're talking about freezing the various levels right now as they correspond with the category that they work in, with a maximum being at thirteen thousand at the end. So, a person moving up to the ranks, even though the cost of those benefits, let's say the health insurance might go, be going up at a certain amount, they're frozen at this year's range. But they would continue to receive those frozen amounts as they go up to the maximum of thirteen thousand dollars.
That's exactly one-hundred percent correct.
So, how do they go, how do they go up?
As they move, as they move, as you move up in your level of employment, then whatever the number was in two thousand and eight for your benefit, that's the amount you would get. It would not, it would not be increased.
One to a two, two to a three, three A to three B to three C. That, that's what you're suggesting?
Correct. Whatever...
And you freeze the numbers as of two thousand and eight numbers.
Whatever a four C would receive in two thousand eight, when I ultimately become a four C, that's the benefit dollar amount I would receive in the year I become a four C.
Okay, so in effect, freeze the benefit dollars based on the formula, based on the compensation rate that occurs as of now.
Correct.
So, that a future, okay. All right. Now, I under, now I understand, now I understand the position.
Okay. Any other questions?
Is the, everyone clear on that or?
My question is, as we're talking about a one-year contract, that contract freeze would only apply to one year.
That's true.
So...
That, that's correct. Now, we are willing to talk longer contract if, if the county's willing to talk numbers on the other side of it. I mean, we'd be willing to take a three-year benefit freeze, um, with the corresponding pay increases for three years. I mean, we'd have to look at that. What we're talking about is really decoupling benefits from salary because over the past five, six, seven years, we really have looked at total compensation. We haven't had them as separate numbers. Total compensation is what we've always looked at. When I look at, I got my paycheck today. I looked at it eight o'clock this morning. I look at the bottom-line number, what I get. I don't look at how much I got in benefits and stuff like that. And so, once benefits is fixed, it's really, we're going to be focusing in on what the salary should be and what's appropriate.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I believe there's a few members of the public that want to...
We're not quite...
Well, we're not doing that yet.
Oh, excuse me. You forgot Mr. Huntley.
Thank you, Mr. Saltes.
(laughing)
Uh, Mr. Huntley?
Uh, yes, I'm going to go forward with a, um, a proposal, uh, PowerPoint as well. Uh, and there's probably not a lot different. Is the red one the one I want to push or am I going to blow everything out? All right. Uh, this is a brief, quick description of our steps in the process and when, uh, the impasse was occurred. I'm not going to read. Folks can read. I'll just keep moving along. There is an impasse resolution procedure and this is a summary. Uh, the Board has seen this before, can approve the county or the association's recommendation, may call for testimony, may ask for additional data, uh, may seek the recommendations of a neutral, can send the parties back to the table, can do nothing. And the Board's decision is final with, except as someone might pursue, uh, the Court's. Um, the impasse resolution allows options, as previously mentioned, to impose the county's last offer. However, in this particular case, the county's last offer was a multiple choice because we had reviewed the separate submissions where the, uh, attorneys had submitted different percentage increases for different level attorneys. So, while the total dollar amount wasn't what they were looking for, we did attempt to offer them some choices, uh, that would reflect kind of their, their, uh, desires for a differentiation between, uh, entry-level attorney positions and the more experienced one. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, option B on this, uh, chart is the one you were referring to. And Roland, you can correct me if I'm wrong when we actually put it up.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're correct, Mr. Huntley. It was option B that we were... The one we were referring to in our presentation was option B under the agenda item, correct.
Okay, so we're, but we've agreed that we're talking about the same thing, which that's remarkable at this point. Uh, let me talk about option A. One of the issues that we have discussed with the Board is, um, the question of, of dealing with a three percent package. Uh, and we have in other cases done a package where there was no change to the benefit amount. We put a three percent package together. In addition to that, the Board authorized us to pay a flat lump sum of five hundred dollars per employee one time, uh, in reflection of the direction of the county administrative officer and the staff that due to the fiscal uncertainty, we didn't want to put dollars into ongoing costs, but we did have some one-time money. Uh, please note that in their counterproposal, uh, and their proposal to the Board, the five hundred dollars is, per employee, is not included, uh, but is essentially has been diverted, I believe, into the salary numbers, if you look at it closely. Um, we have a proposed contract term. However, unless we reach an agreement, there, there really will not be a contract. Uh, if the Board were to do anything, either impose, uh, the county's position or impose, or impose the position of, uh, the attorneys, I suppose arguably, if you wanted to adopt the attorney's position, I would recommend you send us back to the table because then we could in fact have an actual contract. But if you were not going to do that and were going to unilaterally impose a county position, you certainly could do so. That does not create a contract, but it does modify the terms and conditions of employment. Um, under option A and, uh, these same option, most of these same, uh, options or elements of option A are in the other options. We've talked about eliminating the percentage factor in calculating future benefit amount changes for all employees. Uh, in effect, we would take what the existing formula does, put it into place and, and lock in those benefits amount as of October one. Uh, new employees would be frozen at a fixed rate equivalent to the present formula at step one of their classification. So, when you're now hiring from the outside, that person would all, would have for that position and that classification, step one. Uh, employees waiving participation in the county's health insurance program will continue to have their benefit amount frozen at the current level. That action was taken prior to the, um, uh, creation of the attorney's bargaining unit when they were unrepresented. Employees and all unrepresented have their, uh, insurance benefit amount frozen, uh, if it's not, if it's waived. That's not a change. That's simply memorializing in our proposal what went into effect the prior year. We did propose an increase on the sick leave cap for family use. This option B is the one that most reflects, albeit not the percentages they were interested, but the distribution of the percentages effective in December, which is the date we've used for the others. All the other elements in op, in items one through, in option A, items two through six, including freezing the benefit amount, the five hundred dollar one-time numbers was included in option B. B. Option C is a different distribution of the percentages. Everything else remains the same. Option D, once again, a different distribution of the percentages. All the other options remain the same. Our obligation in, in, in following the impasse procedure is to report to the board the county's last best and final offer. That's why you are seeing all of these, although we do know, based on the comments of, uh, Roland and, and Paul, that, uh, option B is the one preferred, I guess. Option E, uh, would reflect what was done for the unrepresented employees, and that was a recommendation we made, I made, uh, at the time we concluded the impasse, because it incorporates the beginning of the process that we have endorsed throughout, um, the workforce, which is to put benefit dollars into benefit for employees as opposed to putting it into salary on an ongoing basis. So this is a smaller salary increase, but it does guarantee 100% of the employee only at the $1,000 deductible level, and the increased amounts for spouse and family members, and it also includes the $500 one-time payment. I've already mentioned this, all of the options include, uh, items two through six. Also, uh, the proposal from the attorneys indicated that we had essentially reached agreement on the personnel rules and regulations and the terms and conditions of employment. I believe that's correct, I'm sure they'll correct me if that is not correct, but our proposal should you unilaterally implement would be to impose the terms and conditions of employment, as well as approving the revised personnel rules. Already seen the presentation of their final position. Benefit amount, uh, once again, we've spoken about freezing this. The interpretation I had of their proposal was the benefit amount formula would continue until the $13,000 is obtained. Our position on the increase in the benefit amount is that it is frozen at that classification, but when I promote from an attorney one to an attorney two, just as if I was hired as an attorney two from the outside, my benefit amount goes to step one of attorney two. When I move to attorney three, it goes to step one of attorney three, and so on. So it's frozen, but it's frozen at each level. Now, the difference, I believe, between what is being suggested as the alternative proposed by the attorneys and what we're proposing is, once you're frozen and locked in, you'll always be either where you are, or you'll be at the benefit amount calculated based on step one of a future class. Provided, however, if say you're an attorney one at step five and you promote to an attorney two, the benefit amount for attorney one at step five is greater than the benefit amount for an attorney at step one of attorney two. So you would be Y-rated. So you would never have a reduction in your benefit amount, but just as if you were hired from the outside, if you're at step, if you're, you know, at, at four, you're hired as level four, then you would get one of level four. So there still is movement within the county's proposal to freeze the benefit amount. Let me just jump to the last slide. Necessary, I'll go back during rebuttal. We do not, uh, don't object to an option that freezes the benefit amount and puts the full value into salary only, if that's something they would prefer to do. The county does agree and acknowledge that their higher-level attorneys are lower-paid than their counterparts. The county's last best and final offer is consistent with, uh, the negotiated agreements and the compensation imposed where no agreement was reached, and I will be happy to respond to questions.
Questions from board members at this time? Supervisor Worley?
I just, my question really was on the numbers that were presented by the association this morning. I don't know if you, had you had a chance to look at those numbers before, and do we agree with them, or do we disagree with them in terms of the, the actual cost back to the county of the overall, uh, they've used some, taken the entire association numbers and said, this is how much money, um, you know, we're, we're separated by. Do we agree with those numbers?
I, we agree that the calendar cost increase of $394,000, which is what they calculate the increased percentages would generate, we believe that that to be an accurate statement, and it would constitute a 5.12% increase. Issue of the proposed freezing of the wages in which they indicate there's a $39,000 savings. I'm not satisfied that that's actually true. We calculated, we calculated first the savings of those people who are close enough to $13,000 as a benefit amount, as to what that would equate to. And that amount, uh, in 2009 would reduce the total cost to the county by $7,200. I agree that the benefit amount increase proposed, uh, will cost $39,500. The question is, I'm not certain how that actually works, because every time there is a 5% merit increase, the number will change. So what we're saying is, in the event of a promotion or a number change, those numbers are going to continue to go up. And ultimately, if they can ultimately reach 13,000, that is a long-term impact on the county of about $240,000. So I would have to, I have to be honest with you, I would have to go back and look at how the specific representation of freezing the benefit amount for step four of, of, uh, level two would compare under their proposal as compared to our proposal, was when you promote, you get step one or you Y-rate.
I think then what, probably what they would say is that if you were to take a snapshot of the numbers, that's maybe where they are today, but given the fact that there are more variables to that, that, that's going to be changed.
And that, we'd have to, I'd have to go back. I'm not, I'm not saying it's not true, I'm simply saying I'd have to look at it in light of the conflicting or the, or the different, um, iterations of how we've addressed these issues.
And then the other question I had was, where we talk about the overall percentage of salary increase, they're saying it's 5.12%. What is the county's last best final offer? What is the overall increase to the county? Is it more than 2.75%? Is it 3%? What, what is the total?
It's, it's comprised of, of different elements. In each of the proposals, uh, that we had.
Well, let's take the one that everybody seems to think is the preferred model, which I guess was B.
Item, model B.
Am I timed now too?
I think that was the original time, so I think you're fine, Supervisor.
The item, the item B, uh, is essentially the equivalent of the 3% salary increase. That would be true. Then we estimate that, based on the total salaries of the unit, the $500,000 is about three-quarters of a percent, but that's a one-time cost, which is treated differently. And, uh, if there are no, then the question becomes how we treat the benefit amount. If the benefit amount increases under the old formula, it would be something less than $39,000, because it would be based on a 3% increase rather than a weighted increase of 5%. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have all these numbers, but, but this, this is a 3% salary plus another 0.6% one-time money in the 500 as compared to their, uh, 5%. Or, uh, if you take the credit for the $40,000, their 4.6% credit, 4.6 total comp. One of the differences is their 4.6% is an ongoing continuous cost, and the county's 3% plus the 50,000, uh, 50,000 or 50,500 is a one-time cost.
Did I answer your question, Supervisor?
I think so.
Sort of. Supervisor, Ashida had a question?
This is terribly confusing, but I can follow it. But I think the problem we have here, and I think the county is trying to move in a different direction. That direction is, is confusing because of the benefits. And the benefits have been put in place because we're trying to escape income tax through benefit programs. So your net pay is higher because you're not paying taxes. And I think what happens in the end is we get all this confusion because we've been trying to avoid taxable income, and maybe we, we need to move in a direction where your, your salary is your salary, and benefits your benefit, and we move away from trying to hide income through benefits. And that makes it simpler for everybody.
Here, here, Supervisor Ashida.
After tonight, the income taxing may be.
Well, okay, then you'll all be targeted.
I don't know where that's going to be either.
That's been the county's position in all these negotiations. Benefit dollars go to benefit, salaries go to salary.
Right.
Well, that was the formula laid down years before any of us got here, and might not have been our preferred model, it's what we've stuck with.
Well, I think what we're looking at is maybe moving to a different direction. That's been my understanding, that we're, from the benefit side back to the salary side.
Mr. Rousseau would like to.
Yes, thank you, Chairwoman. I agree with you wholeheartedly, Supervisor Ashida. This has been, uh, an ongoing challenge for the administration, uh, the HR director and myself, as to how to unravel this god-awful, uh, program that we set up 10 years ago and be fair to everyone in the process. And, and that's the challenge that we're trying to, uh, we're trying to address today. I do want to point out one thing with, with respect to option B that they've pointed out is, it's my understanding that you've taken the one-time $500 bonus and put that, included that in your calculation, and, and that's something that, that we did not intend to do. Because we know that our future budgets, and I can go into the various newspaper articles I have from other counties and where they're at and what the future holds, and it's not pretty. You know, we, let's just, we could talk about their proposal and the breakdown of it, but, but I did want to point out that, you know, I, we do agree with you. Our whole intent, the administration's intent with, with our workforce, is to try to unravel this as, as delicately as possible, and.
I don't know that that's possible.
Well, that's, we're experiencing the unraveling today to a certain extent, but I agree with you, it's complicated, it doesn't need to be this way. Right now, we have, we have over 4,000 different benefit amounts, because every employee is unique and has his or her own benefit amount. It's, it's a, it's a god-awful system that was designed in part to benefit the higher-end, higher-paid employees and to avoid taxation. And Mr. Huntley and, and I are doing what we can to try to unravel this and again, be fair to everyone involved.
And very politely not mention any names as to who set up this god-awful program as it is. Thank you so much for that. Okay.
I know this is kind of out of order, but since.
Yes, it is, sir.
May I make one comment on that?
On what?
On how unraveling the benefit system, since we were talking about it, because.
Okay, would you like to do that during your turn, which is next during public comment?
If I could just have like 30 seconds of beginning.
And the last lawyer that asked me for 30 seconds actually tried to get about 10 minutes, sir, but, uh, do you want us to time you for 30 seconds? And I'm just kidding. Yes, I will allow you to comment.
Okay. The only comment was, we had an alternative proposal that was unofficial. Basically, we said, is, there's 25 different benefit amounts right now. Give everybody in our group the same benefit, the minimum benefit amount, which I believe is approximately $5,500. Calculate what the difference is between what each pay category is receiving in benefits now and $5,500. Add that back in the pay. We're all getting the same benefit amounts, and then the pay that was originally intended to be pay that was put in the benefits, just put it back in the pay.
Okay, that's alternative EFG.
That's just something, that's just something for discussion for the future that we're looking at.
Okay. Thank you.
Ma'am, Chair, could I clarify? Mr. Sultes? Can you say you had an unofficial?
No, we were, this was a talking point through our negotiations, it was never a formal proposal.
Okay, it was just something you discussed.
It was a talking point, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisors, no more questions? We're at, okay. Uh, we're now going to, uh, open the public comment period. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, we will go, uh, for approximately 15 minutes, we will stop the clock if there are board member questions or, um, other input. And, uh, I'm assuming, sir, that you've decided you're first.
Whether it was me or not, I'm not sure, but I am first. Good morning, my name is Steve Prokoski.
I, I guess I will yield, even though you're not first on my list, and allow you to be first. All right.
I'm a deputy public defender five, I've been employed in Tulare County since 2003. My job in the 180 seconds of time I've been allotted this morning is to explain to you who we are and why this is such an important decision for this board. G-Law has 105 members. We are the county's prosecutors, public defenders, child support enforcement attorneys, and elder law employees. As a bare minimum, by definition, each of our membership has completed no less than seven years of post-grade school education, four years of an undergraduate education at a minimum, three years of a graduate education at a minimum. Any number of us who have graduated from law school within the last 20 years are likely to carry a loan load when we graduate from law school of anywhere between $75,000 and As a very, very important piece of recruitment and retention, I'll ask and then eventually, of course, tell you, how many members of G-Law do you imagine are from Tulare County? Of the 105 members of G-Law, five. Five members of our unit are from Tulare County. 4.76% of our membership, which means, as a starting proposition, our department heads have to recruit almost 96% of their employees from other places. And where do they go? In this state, they go to San Diego, Los Angeles, and the Bay Area. Why? There are more people there, there are also more law schools and more law school graduates. So 96% of us amass loan debt in an urban setting and then come to Tulare County for whatever reason we come here. I personally came here for the challenge of representing desperately poor, indigent criminal defendants. Tulare County has a seemingly endless supply of those people. I am relatively typical of the G-Law experience. I moved here with about $80,000 in loan debt, and as soon as I got here, I had to defer my loan payments and then ultimately forbear my loan payments. And last month, I started paying $600 a month to satisfy my loan load, which means that every penny that I have made more than the first day I walked in the door when I took this job for $42,000 has just gone away. Every salary increase I have experienced since the moment I got here started to go to the federal government last month. Why is that problematic? Because all of the new attorneys who moved to Tulare County do exactly what I did, which is they defer or forbear their student loans, and when that time is going to expire, that deferment or forbearance, that's when they know that they have to leave. And that is an unfortunate reality. If I might just finish this point, you'll notice, and I think you are all well aware, there was a SIPR request recently, uh, made and complied with by the Visalia Times Delta for the salaries and names of every employee of Tulare County who were making more than six figures. Not one single member, not one single member of my organization is on that list, because we are capped at less than six figures, which means effectively that the decision of this board with regard to the value of their most senior prosecutors, defense attorneys, child support attorneys, and elder law attorneys is that their value is less than $100,000 each. Some of us carry loan debt in the range of a quarter of a million dollars, and so you can imagine what will happen to those attorneys once they have to start paying those bills. They will go to Ventura, they will go to Kern, they will go to Oakland, Alameda, and San Francisco. We have told the board.
Are you ready to sum up, sir?
Through Mr. Huntley?
Thank you.
That should this board grant, and across the board, 10% salary increase to our membership, we would still be the lowest-paid public attorney. membership, we would still be the lowest-paid public attorneys in the Central Valley. If the board granted our 3, 3, 5, 6, and 6% proposal that we presented today, they would have to make the same grant four years running, four years running, before we became competitive.
Thank you. Did you have something to say Supervisor Ashida?
I'm looking at fellow supervisors. None of us are in six figures either.
Well, actually...
We're not getting into this discussion right now. Thank you very much.
I would refer the board to September 27th.
Yeah, thank you Supervisor for withdrawing your comment. There's base salary and there's all of that stuff, but we're not having this conversation right now. And I apologize. I'm happy to have the conversation when it's on the agenda. Okay. Next for public comment, I don't know if you want to go in any special order. Mr. Shelter, I happen to have you on top.
I'll defer to the next.
Okay. Melissa Benitez? Or it doesn't make any difference to me. I don't care who.
Good morning. My name is Paula Clark.
Oh, you aren't even on the list. Okay, Paula.
I have the form here. And today, I would like to read to you a letter from Judge Kalation, who is the presiding justice of our county.
We have that letter.
And I believe you have it.
But you can read it if you'd like.
We would like to read it into the record.
Okay.
As presiding judge of the Tulare County Superior Court, it has become apparent that the administration of justice in Tulare County has reached a critical point that needs to be addressed by the county. Attorney turnover in Tulare County from the district attorney, public defender, and child support services has reached problematic proportions. The monthly loss of experienced public attorneys has the potential to affect the orderly administration of justice. The rights of victims, those of witnesses, law enforcement, plaintiffs, and defendants require a specialized knowledge of each area of law that cannot be gained from merely graduating from law school. Each and every loss of an experienced public attorney directly results in the continuance of motions and trials, wasting precious judicial and law enforcement resources. We encourage all parties to address the professional turnover rate by ensuring that the public attorneys receive reasonable compensation that promote retention and professional excellence in our community. And this is signed Joseph A. Kalation, Presiding Judge. And I will present this to the clerk. I would also add my two cents in that I am one of those 4% of attorneys who grew up here. I returned to Tulare County after my education because this is home, and this is where I want to be a prosecutor, and I want to provide that services to our county. But I need to be able to do that and provide for my family. And I really encourage you to look at this very seriously. We have presented a very reasonable argument, and we ask that you consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Good morning, folks. My name is Neil Pedowitz. I'm a 5E and I'm deputy public defender. I came to work for Tulare County back in June of 2004. I was retired. And when I came to work, I decided that I really didn't like being a small businessman. I really didn't like being a sole practitioner. I wanted to stand in front of 12 people and defend folks that were on trial for their life. As a private practitioner, it was mostly rich people's teenage sons on drunk drivings. That's why I took this job. Working with Mr. Shelter and Ms. Bertolino has been a wonderful experience. And about four months ago, five months ago, this brouhaha, and by that I mean the labor negotiations, started. I can't tell you how irritating it is to read messages from Mr. Huntley telling me that I shouldn't cross my secretary's picket line, or if we strike, we're not going to get paid, or how the younger attorneys feel. None of this has anything to really do with my job. Right now, I'm not representing anybody except me and the lawyers that I work with. I could be at my office working on a DP case. That means death penalty. That's the type of work I do. But I'm not because of this problem. One of the problems that you don't know about is how irritating it is to be an attorney for over 20 years, meet young lawyers that are bright-eyed, enthusiastic, idealistic, and spend a year of your time when you're not working on your own cases giving them practice pointers and telling them how to do their job. And then finding that they've left for Ventura, or Bakersfield, or wherever, because they can't afford to deal with their student loans and live in this county. Now, my wife is stage four. Insurance is very important to me. Zero deductible Blue Shield, very important to me. Am I absolutely at the max on my flex spending fund? You betcha. My bills look like hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. The minute people start talking about freezing my benefits, cutting my benefits back, what have you, I really have to start wondering whether I'm in the right county. And I'm not that different from, say, a 29-year-old, brand-new attorney who's a woman who's thinking about having a baby. Concluding the point in 15 seconds or less, I'd put it to you that you really do have a lot of good attorneys here. And if you want to freeze anything, why don't you try to freeze the exit from this county by paying these people the fair wage that they all deserve, myself included? And by the way, last point, nobody wants my job. Nobody in my office wants my job. And when I go out to eat, the waitress will look me in the eye and go, "You're the one I saw on television. How do you defend people like that?" Pay me what I'm due.
All righty then. The next name I have is Erica Ziegenhorn, but I don't really care what order it is. Okay. Would that be Tim Rhode? How are you, Tim?
Good, thanks you. Nice to see you again, Ms. Conley. My name is Tim Rhode. I work in the public defender's office. I'm back for my second stint primarily because I also prefer to represent people that are at the lowest point, indigent people. I wanted to touch base, and I wanted to come, and I wasn't going to say anything because I think it's not my nature to exercise in futility, and I'm not sure that anything I say is going to make a difference. But I will say, when we get to public safety, and Mr. Greco was making some points, but let's talk in a practical manner. I'm sure that you're aware of what's called by my clients, early kicks. They've been up to 90 days for women. The reason that there's early kicks primarily is because people are in custody waiting for their trials, and so there's not enough room in the jail for people to finish their sentences. Good for my clients, not really good for public safety. That falls at your foot's, your feet right here. That problem is right in this room. It's the delays that happen. When I came back to the office, I got two murder cases my first day back. We had to continue those cases. They're still pending because I had to start over. That's a real problem. And people are getting out of jail early, not finishing their sentences that the judges are giving them because of the turnover. It's not because we don't have enough jail space. It's because we're not paying the people to stay here to do the work that needs to be done to make this county function in criminal justice. Another point I want to make is, you stated, sir, that the idea is to make it fair for everyone involved. What's impossible for me to reconcile with that is that you're creating an obviously inequitable system within our own bargaining unit. If I get promoted to a level five tomorrow, I'll be always capped at a level 5.1, even if I'm a, and I wouldn't get promoted to a level 5.1, it would be a 5C at least, or else I'd have a cut in pay. I would never get those benefits, and I would never get paid the same amount ever as the other 5Cs that were already fives before me. So you're going to create a system where you have people making different amounts for doing the same work. That's not fair. That's obviously inequitable. And if we're going to create a system, and that's why I think the caps make sense, because it treats everybody in our bargaining unit the same way. So when we cap out, we're all going to be making the same as each other, not a different amount. You can't make things fair by making them different for our bargaining unit so that we're paid different amounts for the same work. It makes no sense. It's self-contradictory. Don't do that.
Right on schedule. Thank you, Tim. The last name I have on the paper is Lisa Strongen. Did I say that right, Lisa? I should know that. You've been here several times. And then we'll take others as time allows.
Good morning, and thank you for recognizing me, which is part of the point I wanted to make. You've heard a lot about the money. I'm also high up on the salary scheme. I've been here 20 years. I couldn't believe it either. Our joke at home is, we're a small communist nation. We're on a series of five-year plans. When I came here, I had a bunch of experience, and so I came here to put that to work in a place where the need was great. And so I've been a lawyer over 25 years, and I'm kind of feeling it now, so a little old. But the thing is, most of you, I think, recognize me because I have been here, but I haven't been here as a lawyer, per se. I've been here as a member, chair of the Tulare County Mental Health Board. I've been here because I've taken on the mock trial program for years and years. I've been here because I give back to the county. And that is what you're going to lose. Because, I mean, if we talk about me, I'm also kind of looking at retirement now. Ay, ay, ay. And I think, is it worth my while to jump ship after all these years to be paid 10% to 20% more for the next 10 years of my working life so that I could retire at a higher level? And to give up the friends, the community, and frankly, a kind of influence that I have even within my job in the court system because people know me, so that my own private later years are better, perhaps? I'd like to think that I've been an asset to the county. I look around at my fellow attorneys. They're smart men and women. They're generous with their time and energy. We've all agreed to be lawyers at quite less than the going rate to do public good, to be public employees. And yet, these are the people that you're willing to say bye-bye to with this kind of thinking. And not have them invest not only in their work that is necessary, but in their communities. Not only to not be on boards and commissions, but not be in the neighborhoods, not be raising their children here, not be influencing the climate of this community, the overall well-being of this community. Because if people stay here for one or two years, they're not invested. They don't care. They don't join things. They don't do the rest of the public service good that we all should do as citizens of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Hey.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Are we still within our 15-minute time?
Actually, we started public comment period at 12:10:05, so we're actually at the 15-minute mark, a little past.
Okay. Well, I'll allow that anyway. Mr. Shelter, because it's you.
And I appreciate that, Madam Chair. I will not take full three minutes, I don't think.
If you need it, please.
I actually wasn't planning on speaking. Michael Shelter, public defender. You've heard from some of my employees. You've heard from some deputy district attorneys. From the discussion that I've heard this morning, I'm actually encouraged because it sounds to me as though we're not far off. And what I would like to suggest is that because we're not that far off, that perhaps returning to the bargaining table would be the best course of action at this point. However, I do want to underscore both what Judge Kalation said, as well as a deputy district attorney who spoke before you. What we're talking about is really truly a public safety issue. And I'm not saying anything that you don't already know and don't already well appreciate. But when we don't have qualified prosecutors and defenders, the public suffers. And we recruit not from Tulare County, not from Fresno County, not from Kern, not from Kings, from nowhere in the valley because there are not law schools here. We recruit from the places where there all are law schools. So we are competing statewide. In order for us to get qualified applicants, we have to be competitive both at the bottom end, where we actually have made some inroads in past years. But in order to keep people and to get qualified people at the higher ends, we need to be competitive at the top end as well. Again, not anything that you haven't already heard or don't already well appreciate, but I don't have a particular recommendation. I'm not here to advocate one Plan A through E, and I frankly don't envy the position that you're in. I will say that from a department head's standpoint, in terms of recruiting qualified individuals and keeping really excellent advocates, and you've heard from some of them today, they're articulate, they're passionate, they care about the work they do, and frankly, they care about Tulare County. Not one of them wants to leave. The people, the last, the five people who left this year to go to Ventura County and earn significantly greater salaries, not one of them wanted to leave Tulare County. They had families here, they were enrolled in school, they were involved in the community. Not one of them wanted to leave. All of them left because their salaries were higher, and frankly, their workloads were lower. So what I would urge from my perspective as a manager of some of these individuals is that it appears as though we're not too far off, and that perhaps returning to the table would be to everyone's benefit. Thank you. And I didn't take my full three minutes.
Very well done, sir. Okay. Mr. Huntley? Five minutes for... Oh, no, I forgot. Did I miss the, I've got to let five-minute rebuttal from Mr. Greco, or Soltis, or et al. Whoever it is.
I don't even believe it's going to take five minutes. We are close. Let's face it. We're really close. And we're really talking about language differences on the benefits. The real issue is, we don't want to create a two-class system of benefits where one person is paid different than another person for being at the same level of employee. That's the bottom line. We think our proposal for benefits is reasonable. Yes, it is a cut. It's something that we came here thinking we were going to get paid. We thought we'd get that 10% of our pay. We're willing to forego it now. Like I said, we did have talking points about alternative ways to try and get everybody on the same track. We're willing to work in the future to get to that point. As far as our pay, our proposal, the 2, 2, 3, 5, 5, we think that's reasonable. Overall, it's a 5% increase. However, if you discount the amount of money that we're foregoing, it's an effective increase to us of 4.4%, but in real dollars to the county, it is costing approximately 5%. I calculated real quick when there was a question. Excuse me, 3, 3, 5, 5. I'm sorry. Oh. Excuse me. Our proposal was 3, 3, 5, 6, 6. And I'm going fast here to get through our five minutes. I did calculate the county's proposal. What I thought, when we looked at it, the net effect is $292,000 as an increase for the 2, 2.5, 4, 4% proposal, where ours is approximately 390. We're approximately $100,000 apart there, but if you add the $50,000 that was going to give in a one-time bonus, we're really only about $50,000 apart in real-world dollars of what we're receiving this year. That's a 4.4, 5% increase based upon total payrolls, what the county's offering us for this next salary year. You've heard the speakers, you've heard what everybody said. We do come here from a lot of places. I consider myself a transplant because I moved here, and then I decided to stay here and go to law school. I went to law school in Clovis. I drove up there every day. I spent an hour every day for three and a half years on the road to become a public defender. spent an hour every day, for three-and-a-half years on the road to become a public defender. I worked in the office for a couple of years, I fell in love with the work, I fell in love with the county. We are the leaders in this community, the people that are going to be in the future that look up. There was a survey done recently, that said Tulare County has one of the lowest college graduate rates, in not just the state of California, but the entire United States. These are the type of people we want to keep here in Tulare County, they're the future leaders. You heard Ms. Strongen talk about all the commissions and things she's on. Myself, I'm a planning commissioner for the city of Visalia, I'm the head coach administrator for the Visalia AYSO Soccer, we have 2,000 kids playing every Saturday, I've coached softball for five years. You're going to find many other people that work in our offices and do the same thing. I know that I see all these people in the community volunteering, doing the work. We're the type of people that get out, they roll up our sleeves and do what needs to be done. I want to see my fellow attorneys stay here. It pains me every time I see somebody leave, because they're going to make more money somewhere else. We've lost great attorneys on both sides, both sides, district attorneys, public defenders, child support attorneys. It doesn't help, we want to keep these people, we really want to, we want to create a pool of talent, and Mr. Seltzer did talk about it's a public safety issue. Now, it is a public safety issue, if we don't have qualified attorneys, we're not doing a service to the public. We're so close on our proposals right now, what we're asking is that if, the county really has a couple options here today, we don't propose that you implement Option E, that the county's proposing, under any circumstances. We think that's a bad proposal, it doesn't help anybody. Now, the options that we have here is, you can order us to go back to the bargaining table and try and resolve where we're at, give the county negotiator some directions, say, "We really like their proposal for the benefits, but work on the pay a little bit, maybe we can reach an agreement there." I think there's some room in negotiation there. Our biggest hurdle right now is the benefit dollars, the way it's structured, creating two classes of employees. We really don't want two classes of attorneys. Once we settle that, everything else, I think, will fall into place. I enjoy working here, I want to stay here, I love Tulare County, and I appreciate the opportunity to, on this historic day, that you've given us to speak, it just proves that the American system of democracy is a wonderful thing, and I'd like to thank everybody for the opportunity to hear all our speakers today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soltis. Mr. Huntley?
Thank you. I'm going to try and cover a couple of different topics here, I want to talk about turnover, I want to talk about the difference in the benefit amounts, and a couple of other items. But let's start with the benefit amount issue. We're facing a fundamental, a fundamental question, as to whether or not, or as to what is honestly and truly a fair solution. Now, I have worked for seven agencies in my 40 years in government. This is the only agency that pays a cafeteria benefit, where the amount of the dollars that go into the medical insurance or the health insurance is based on a flat-dollar amount. Every other place that I have worked is based on a tier system, where an employee only gets a certain amount of money, typically to pay 100% of their dependents. An employee with one dependent gets more money to help offset that piece, and finally, those with families even get a larger share. Now, that means that different people doing the same jobs are getting a different amount of money on the basis of their dependent status. Is that fair? At least what I'm hearing is that that would not be considered fair here. But in reality, in the long term, the county's best interest for all of its employees is to make affordable healthcare available, and to change the paradigm, so that we are moving more money into the dependent coverage, and not increasing money beyond that which is needed for the health insurance for the employee-only. And so, Item E, that we proposed, is consistent with what we have imposed, although the dollars are different with SEIU, it's also consistent with what we negotiated with UAW, which is redistribution of the dollars. People have spoken here about, "We're going to be cutting." Nobody is cutting anything, we're freezing, it doesn't go up. That doesn't mean that people are being cut. An argument could be made, that we could distribute all of the payroll dollars in a reverse formula that would back out the benefit amount increase. So, I understand the frustration and the expectation, based on what has been presented, but we are, and I don't disagree, there are problems with this incredible system, and that's why we are making the proposal to start changing that. Benefit dollars for benefits, other dollars for pay. So, if you reject the concept that we're going to end up treating employees with one dependent to insure, and other employees with families to insure, we're going to continue to treat them the same as we treat the employee-only, then obviously, there is a fundamental philosophical difference between the position that our office has taken, and the position that the board has endorsed and directed us to handle in the negotiation process. So I don't know if it's two different classes of employees, I think it's, there have been two different classes of employees, when those employees who can't insure their dependents can't, because they don't get a benefit amount that reflects their dependent status. I want to talk about the turnover figure, and I'm, and regardless of what happens today, would be my suggestion, I would like to meet with the representatives of G-Law, to compare the differences between their figures and mine. Our figures are taken off of the payroll system for enterprise, and they're based upon the input that is done in the departments as to the reasons for leaving. If we look at 2007, in the District Attorney's Office, there were a total of 10 attorneys who voluntarily separated. Now, we classify turnover in different categories. We have involuntary, which obviously means someone's been fired. We have retirement, and we have death. We consider retirement, for example, a positive turnover. That's where someone has reached a certain point in their career. So there are certain types of turnover that are not, quote, "negative," or driven by the fact that people are moving to another place for another job. So if we look at the actual figures for the District Attorney...
Can you finish?
Yeah, let me finish this way. In 2008, extrapolated to 12 months, District Attorney turnover, involuntary turnover is 5.8%. In 2007, for the public defender, voluntary turnover was two attorneys for 2.5%. 2008, that's where the big change is being, showing, that's eight attorneys at 3.3%. So I'm not sure where the 24% is coming from, but the last two years, and I'd be happy to go over these numbers with you, but that's what the enterprise system is telling us, unless your payroll clerks have put in the data incorrectly. If you would bear with me, as you've permitted them to have a little additional time, let me just mention a couple of things. One of the speakers talked about the fact that there were no attorneys in the six-figure income, with the proposed increase from the county effective in December, there will be 11 attorneys who will be in the six-figure income, just so you know. Neil, I don't know where you went, or whatever, two things. I'm very sorry about your wife, I truly am, and I know that insurance is important to you. And I also want to tell you that I thought your remark, that my messages were irritable, is the most kindly presentation of that statement that I've heard from anyone. So, I appreciate your gentleness with me. I am prepared to recommend to the board alternatives to the option that we included, that would go more along the line of what has been requested, but only from the list of proposals that management has submitted to you. That concludes my remarks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Huntley, and also, you know, I know, counsel, we have this on a closed-session agenda, and I'm assuming that's what we will do next?
We object to any further discussions about our negotiations being made in closed session.
I understand that.
It's our contention that it's a Brown Act violation if you go in closed session, since we are at impasse, and it's now an agenda item.
You need to look at the Brown Act. The Brown Act specifically allows going into closed session to discuss labor negotiations, of which this is a part. We sent you a letter weeks ago, asking if you had, or Mr. Martin did, weeks ago, asking you if you had authority to the contrary, and we've never heard anything.
Well, I could say right now, we've never received that letter.
Really?
We've never received this letter. I've never received this. I don't know, G-Law, 120 South Church Street, that's not an address, that's...
That's the address on the documents that you submitted to us for your...
Is that our post office box now? That's a new act, we have not received, I have not received it, I've never seen that document. I, as far as at this point in time, but that's our contention.
Well, I appreciate your contention.
I mean, I would have...
Your lawyers, we have lawyers.
That's fine, that's just...
There's a lot of lawyers here, at least four members of this board of supervisors are not lawyers.
I'm sorry that you didn't receive the letter, but the literal language, and perhaps Mr. Huntley could get you a copy, the language in the statute specifically allows this.
Well, I'm not going to get into a legal argument right now, I do have Attorney General's opinion that I can give you.
Suffice it to say that we appreciate the comments this morning, sincerely appreciate that. Not just all the numbers and the figures, in particular, I appreciate the attorneys that came and told us their personal story, and spoke with us this morning. So, this board appreciates all those presentations. We do believe that we have the right to go to closed session, excuse me, I'm losing my words now, there's so many numbers floating around in my small brain. Anyway, we are going to go to closed session, and we will be back.
This is Item H.
Item H, thank you. a time that we would probably have comments from you. This is one supervisor that has a feeling that, as I've done in the past, that there's always opportunity to continue conversation, and I always think that's the best way, especially if we are close. But that's just my feelings, I would open that to you, gentlemen, to hear your thoughts. Supervisor Worley?
Madam Chairman, first off, I want to say how much I do appreciate the civility of our conversation here this morning, and also how the offer, the last and best final offers are very close, which was not, has not always been the case when we've gotten to this point. I do think that the offer on the table by the, by G-Law is a reasonable offer, it's not at all unreasonable. The one thing that I hope is appreciated by G-Law and those who are here in the audience today, is that Tulare County only controls one thing, and that really is our spending. We do not control our income. So, when we think in terms of giving more to someone, or some group, or something of that nature, from where does that money come? And it's, and again, it has to come from someplace else, some one else, some program. And so that is the difficulty that we always have to deal with as a county, is trying to live within our means, and our county has done a very good job of that. And some of the counties in our state and cities are in much, very dire straits financially, because they have made some decisions about outgoing expenses that were not, did not contemplate a housing market decline, and different things that have reduced their income. So, I believe that there is enough discussion warranted, that we should send the groups back for additional bargaining. And I, whether we will end up in the same place, ultimately, I do not know, but I just felt that there is, there's enough, certainly on the benefit issue, that needs to be further discussed, that it would make sense for us to go back to the bargaining table and talk.
And that, you know, with the closeness of it, in light of the facts and information, it makes sense to me. Supervisor Coles?
If I can. First off, I'd like to thank you for not bringing clappers with you today. Second, I agree, I think we're close, I don't want to create any unreal expectations that we're throwing a larger piece of pie on the table, just giving our Human Resource Director direction to go back and to continue the negotiating. So I agree with Supervisor Worley, that we do need to go back.
Anybody else?
I would make that motion.
Second.
Cast your votes, please. Let's pass this unanimously to continue the discussion. Actually, except for a set period of time, or just to continue until you all decide to bring it back to us? Guess that's what that is. No one's answering me, I'm answering myself. Okay. We thank everybody for their time and for their input this morning. And as I said before, I always feel it's better to have an agreed, agreed agreement, rather than an enforced one, so. My goodness, we will now get back to our 9:30 timed items. Item two, which is a public hearing, which is a request from Resource Management Agency to approve establishment of new ag preserves. Morning.
Good morning, Chairman Conway and board members. I'm Ann Chapman, I'm a planner with RMA, Countywide Planning, and I'm working on the Williamson Act program. I'm bringing before you today a request for some new ag preserves. Open this, can I get some help on this? Oh, here we go. The request is to approve four new agricultural preserves, and I am going to present some information on each of these first. The four preserves, three of them are on prime agricultural land, these are owned by Estridge, Andrade, and Capheim. The Estridge property is east of Porterville, Andrade is south of Kingsburg, and Capheim is southeast of Sultana. The total prime acreage will be 79.46 acres. There's also one non-prime parcel, and that is the Weisenberger property, 1,390.2 acres, and that is southwest of Springville. The total non-prime acreage is 1,390.2. I'd like to go through the map series on these, I think your packets were missing some pieces. This is for the Estridge property, which is east of Porterville.
Wouldn't that be the Weisenberger property?
This first one is Estridge, and you can see that there...
That lawyer think that's you all wound up.
This shows that there are ag preserves in the region, but not adjacent to the site. The site is interesting, it's in the foothill growth management plan, and there's a very, these small areas of very rich farmland that grows citrus, so it is in the foothill management plan, and it is intensive agriculture. So this is consistent with the general plan. The parcel map, and the aerial photograph. The Andrade property, which is close to the county line, and close to the city of Kingsburg. It has an adjacent agricultural preserve to its east. And the aerial photograph for that, that's orchards. This one is the Weisenberger property, it has portions of... property. It has portions of, it has five parcels. And there are many ag preserves around this. This is non-prime, and it's going to be used as grazing land. And finally, the Capheim property. And it has several adjacent ag preserves. Okay, so that is... Second. Yes, good. We wanted to go through, we've done the summary slides. The fiscal impacts, the restricted value will be $4 million, $2,479,117. This will result in a reduction in taxes of $25,941 per year. After the subvention payments from the state, this will result in a loss of $24,154 annually. The linkage is the Strategic Initiative Two, which is for economic well-being, and it has been a longstanding goal of the county to preserve agriculture, and it's compatible with that. The alternatives are that your board would choose not to put these properties in agricultural preserves, but it has been the custom.
Question?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
We've been, I know for the last number of years, including within our contract provisions, a provision that says in the event that the subvention is halted by the state of California, that the contract would be null and void or something of that nature. Is that language?
That's correct. That language will be in these contracts, too.
The only thing, I was discussing this with Supervisor Cox, I think, yesterday, and just to advise your Board, we and many others are including versions of this. It has not been tested legally. That is, no one has, the trigger hasn't been pulled, so it hasn't been legally tested.
Madam Chair, for me also, this points out very clearly that the state's submission is not a dollar-for-dollar, 100% subvention either. There is a net cost involved with this.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I need to ask a question of Council. Council, the Capheim property is located across the street from my property where I live. Do I need to recuse myself in this matter for that reason? Doesn't have any impact on me?
I think you would fall under the public generally exception, sir. It doesn't have specific benefit to your property.
Yeah, I'd move for approval.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Okay, this is what, you're all finished? It is a public hearing, and so we will now open that if there's anyone that wishes to testify before the Board on this matter. Okay? Seeing and hearing none? Well, then, close the public hearing. Bring it back to the Board for further discussion and/or action, Supervisor.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Cast your votes, please.
That is not a mistake.
That is not a mistake.
That's not a mistake.
Motion passes four to one. Okay. Move to our item number three, our second public hearing, also a request from Resource Management Agency to deny an appeal filed by the California Planning and Engineering Corporation for the Gil Reeves Company.
Madam Chair, if I may, before they start, just for the record, I have not had a business relationship with the Gil Reeves Company. We did play paintball together several years ago. That was a relationship we had. So, I do know Mr. Gil and Mr. Reeves personally, but we never had a business relationship, and I do not feel there's a need for me to recuse myself from this matter.
Thank you. I recuse myself every time one of my children's cousins appeared. I wouldn't be very effective. Okay, good morning, ladies.
Morning.
Chairman Conway, Supervisors, my name is Dana Muttlin with RMA Planning Division. The item before you today is an appeal of Planning Commission's denial of General Plan Amendment Number GPA 08-003 and Change of Zone Number PZ 08-005. The appeal was filed by Gil Reeves Company. I do want to mention that when this proposal went before the Planning Commission, there was an adjacent parcel owned by a different applicant that was included in the request for the General Plan Amendment and Change of Zone. Today's appeal concerns only the 14.6 acre parcel on the west. These sides look...
A quick question, Madam?
Yes.
Excuse me then. So, what the Planning Commission heard was not the same thing that we're hearing today?
They... That's a good question.
What the Planning Commission heard was two cases that went to them in one project. They were separate individuals, and it was the planning department's judgment to take them to the Planning Commission as one case, one General Plan Amendment, one zone change. One was a 14.6 acre parcel, which you'll be hearing today, and the other one was a 2.04 acre parcel just across the road, which you'll be hearing in a couple of weeks. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Thank you. The applicant requested the General Plan Amendment to expand the urban development boundary and change the land use designation from agricultural to commercial, and the rezoning to change the AE20's exclusive agricultural 20 acre minimum zone to C2SCSR, which is general commercial scenic corridor site review, in order to allow the creation of a nine-lot subdivision and subsequent commercial development on the subject's site. On September 18th, 2007, your Board approved Zone Change Initiation Number PZI 07-001 by Resolution Number 2007-0626, which allowed the applicant to proceed with this change of zone and General Plan Amendment. At the time of filing for this Zone Change Initiation, a Rural Valley Lands Plan Parcel Evaluation Checklist was conducted for the site. The site received 16 points, which falls within a gray area in which no clear-cut decision is readily apparent, and the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors make the decision based upon the unique circumstances pertaining to the particular parcel of land, including factors not covered by this system. An RVLP Parcel Evaluation Checklist was not conducted by staff for this project because the site lies within the urban area boundary for Farmersville, and an RVLP Parcel Evaluation is not required under those circumstances. The site is within the Farmersville Area Land Use Plan and designated agricultural. The Environmental Resources Management Element designates the site Flood Plains and Scenic Corridor. The subject site is inside the urban area boundary but outside the urban development boundary for Farmersville. The site is also outside the sphere of influence for the city of Farmersville. Currently, the site is void of any above or below ground improvements. The property to the north is zoned AE20 and contains agriculture. The east is zoned AE20 and M2SC, heavy manufacturing, scenic corridor, and contains rural residences, the Hellwig Manufacturing Plant, and agricultural uses. The south is zoned AE20 and contains rural residential and agricultural uses, State Route 198, and the city of Farmersville. And to the west, it's zoned AE20 and contains rural residences and agriculture. On August 13th, 2008, the Planning Commission heard testimony from the applicant's agent in support of the project. Several adjacent property owners submitted letters and spoke in opposition to the proposal. Their concerns included leapfrogging, groundwater contamination and depletion, and the diminishment of agricultural land. The Planning Commission directed staff to prepare findings for denial. On August 27th, 2008, the Planning Commission denied the applicant's request based upon the following grounds. One, the site will not have access to the city of Farmersville infrastructure. Two, approval of the project would necessitate the expansion of the urban development boundary, and it is county policy that preservation of productive agricultural lands be of the highest priority when considering such modifications. Three, it is county policy that urban development shall take place only within incorporated cities. Four, development of the site would constitute leapfrogging. And five, it is county policy to discourage urban development until such time as urban services become available. The General Plan Amendment was denied by Planning Commission Resolution Number 8372, and the Change of Zone was denied by Planning Commission Resolution Number 8373, both of these on August 27th, 2008. An appeal was timely filed by California Planning on behalf of Gil Reeves Company on September 5th, 2008. And subject to any questions you may have, that concludes staff's summary.
Questions, comments?
I do have one, if I may. Dana, the city of Farmersville has been interested in annexing and jumping over the freeway, taking those properties to the north there and into their urban boundary development area. What's the timeline for that? Because they have a letter that say, that states they support the project and would like us to include a condition that they pre-pipe or have it ready for city services when they become available. Do we know what the timeline for Farmersville annexing that property?
I don't have the timeline. I do know that the applicant's agent has spoken with Farmersville, and perhaps they may be able to answer the question.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions, Board members? All right. This is a public hearing. So, at this time, the Chair will open that public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment?
Good morning.
Morning. Just need your name and address for the record.
Ed Canvaser with California Planning and Engineering, 724 North Ben Maddox here in Visalia. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present our project and express what we believe are the merits of your consideration. I'll be as brief as possible, but would like to start by adding a few facts about the site's history that you may or may not be aware of, since the staff report recalls details of this request, beginning with the GPA initiation back in September of '07. Excuse me. In actuality, the development plans began some three years prior when Mr. Norbert Krogan with Kings River Tractor needed to relocate the business in 2004, and was assured by his realtor and past Farmersville City Manager that the annexation and the business could be included within the city of Farmersville. The process was started of annexation, and as it was recalled to us by the present City Manager, Renee Miller, upon initiation of the annexation process, the county required a municipal services review, which, in her words, instead of taking several months, took 18 months to conclude. Before Mr. Krogan could see the process through, he quickly fell ill and passed away. As you can imagine, with his passing, some delay incurred, and when the partners later regrouped in the process, what the city was restarted. It was determined that the city apparently could not satisfy the county's concerns, and ultimately prepared a letter to LAFCO stating that it was apparent they would likely not approve annexation, but the city approves of allowing the applicant to seek permits to develop the site under county jurisdiction with certain requests and conditions which Mr. Cox, Supervisor Cox, excuse me, just mentioned previously. Due to what appeared to be a dead-in road with the city, the owners consulted with their options, with county staff, and ultimately submitted the GPA and zone change request with staff support and a recommendation for approval to both the Board and the Planning Commission. I will add that the site, as far as the history leading up to around 2007, when we, when our firm was brought in to get the process rolling again, the site had essentially been sitting fallow for as many as seven to 10 years, as best I can gather. In fact, it's not even clear whether they have water rights to the TID canal still. So, some of those, some of those details are a little hard to obtain from the owners, since they really haven't been farming or had interest in farming it from the original purchase. Another noteworthy event, which we mentioned in our formal request for appeal to the Board, upon applying for our zone change and GPA, county staff suggested we co-apply with Mr. Welch, which Dana had mentioned. Unfortunately, when we agreed to this condition, we were unaware of the problems he had had with his neighbors, or the fact that his zone change request was needed to correct a non-conforming use of his pool business. Regardless, we were lumped together, and the end result was Planning Commission that appeared to have, had had his mind already made up and the punishment ready to be delivered. Mr. Welch received considerable criticism from his neighbors and was scorned by the Commission for not obtaining the proper permits and rightfully held accountable for his actions. However, we believe the Commission was not able or willing to separate the two requests and seemed inclined to satisfy the upset neighbors, rather than consider the arguments presented by our firm or value the supporting points and favorable recommendations offered by the county staff. Since the Planning Commission hearing and in preparation of this meeting today, we met with the members of Tulare County Farm Bureau to see if there was anything we could do to gain their support. However, they remain in opposition to any development adjacent to the neighboring farm use. Typical reasons of incompatibility were indicated even when offering an alternative design with fewer parcels, which you have in your exhibit package. Although it's easy to understand there are hardships when farming adjacent to urbanized area, this is not exactly what we consider a rural location due to its proximity to the city, State Route Highway 198, and other nearby commercial uses. Furthermore, in response to several negative findings made by neighbors, or one, the site will not have access to city infrastructure necessitating septic tanks, septic systems, excuse me, and possible groundwater contamination. Fact is, we explained to the Commission and the neighbors that we didn't see an issue with the use of a health department-approved septic system, which is very common throughout the county and is used consistently in more, even more sensitive areas such as Three Rivers. In fact, the site could be developed with several other methods of treating wastewater effluent rather than just a standard septic system. Even a concept to develop the sewer system so that it could ultimately be converted to hook into a future city mainline was not considered acceptable. Additionally, the County Environmental Assessment Officer approved a negative declaration indicating the project will not have any significant environmental impacts, which was included as a supporting point in the staff report for the Planning Commission. It is also important to remind the public that a typical farming operation has its own impacts on the environment and should not be considered the cleanest alternative. Public comments from the neighbors went on to state that the development at the site would reduce available groundwater supply. We argued that a commercial development such as this one being proposed may require less groundwater than if it were to be farmed, and again, our opinion didn't seem to be given any credit or acknowledgement by the Commission. In summary, we believe that the project should be considered on the following merits. The city of Farmersville supports a future annexation as well as development of the site with certain conditions and inputs, as stated in their letter of support. The project could be developed as presented or with alternative design with fewer parcels, which would increase setbacks to the existing surrounding uses. Development would provide much-needed full improvement of the adjacent streets. Development could also participate in a county-managed development impact mitigation program similar to the city of Tulare and Visalia, which collects developer fees for future use towards improvement to the highway interchange. In closing, we realize that this may be a situation where the owners originally sold, were sold a bill of, a bad bill of goods, and may have to accept the stark reality that the plan Mr. Krogan started nearly five years ago will ultimately not see its way through to the end. History and politics aside, we believe the project would be consistent with other nearby commercial uses along Highway 198's frontage, including the adjacent Hellwig facility, as well as provide the addition of much-needed jobs to the area, including those related to the agricultural industry. Furthermore, we look forward to the opportunity to work with the neighbors and with their input and participation. We are sure that their questions and concerns would be resolved. Once again, I want to... Once again, I want to thank you for the opportunity, for your consideration of our appeal, and be available for answers, questions and answers.
Thank you.
Yes.
Questions from board members? Anyone else wishing to address the board? Just need your name and address for the record, and then...
My name is John Schmal. My address is 29698 Road 162, Visalia. My wife and I own most of the property that is across Road 162 from this proposed development. I am one of the upset neighbors. The previous speaker related that they were working with the neighbors. About two days ago, I got a letter stuck in my mailbox. That was the first contact I've ever had with them. But we are opposed to granting this, and a lot of the reasons have already been stated. And my letter, and also a letter who, who was presented by a lady who had to go back to work, basically falls into four categories. First of all is need, and environment, safety, and finally, by personal reasons. First of all, need. There are, there is approximately one mile of open vacant land already zoned for commercial use between the highway and Longwood Avenue, both sides of the road. Parcel of 16 acres for sale, zoned commercial, already available. Two, this land is part of the scenic corridor, which the county and the city of Visalia both have stated is a very important aspect to our tourism in this, in this area. There are properties closer to Visalia that are available, and as the lady from the Planning Commission noted, this would be a leapfrog project. There is a commercial zoning Hellwigs, or a commercial property, Hellwigs that has been there probably since the freeway was put in, maybe even before then. They're not exactly the same situation. Also on the Hellwig prob, property is a vacant commercial building. So, need is kind of, not real high on my list here. In the environments, they talked about a septic system. With nine developments, there could conceivably be 1,000 people out there, and working, trading, doing business there. And to put that much on a septic system, I don't care how you talk about it, it's going to drain down in. The water table in that area, the first standing water is 45 feet. My well draws from 65. We, you know, we talk about a 50-foot minimum drainage, that's a lot of water, a lot of sewage. Another thing is, is there is wildlife there. There are owls, there's some big oak trees, there's owls, great-horned owls, there's hawks that live and roost in there, and hunt that area. There's coyotes come across, maybe don't like coyotes, but they are there, and they keep the vermin down. More importantly, probably a, a safety item, and that is, is on that road, the, two or three of the parcels would actually egress and exit onto the curb where that road swings around to approach the overpass. There's been several different accidents there, and that's not a good spot to have big trucks turning out onto Mineral King. Traffic would greatly increase on my road, which is 162, it's a dead-end road. Three of the properties would, would enter onto 162. No environmental impact report has been asked for by the county, although there are environmental concerns. And finally, from a personal standpoint, this development would bring more traffic, more dust, noise, and light pollution. We get light pollution from across the freeway already, and that's nearly a quarter-mile away. Imagine three or four big parcels, well, nine out there, all of them with their security lights on. Our resale values will plummet, because I don't think anybody would want to buy across the street from an industrial development. Our animals would be more in jeopardy. And basically, to allow this development would destroy why my wife and I moved there 30 years ago, and lived in an AE20 zoning, and with those conditions. So, to finally summarize it, if we'd wanted to live next to an industrial park, we would have moved to Los Angeles. Thank you.
Mr. Schmal?
Yes.
A question, sir.
Yes.
You said your property is on the other side of Road 162.
Yes.
As we're looking at the map, is it that small piece that's immediately across the road, or is it the one closest to the canal?
Do you have the, do you have the original map? Okay, on the original...
I'm looking at a photo, I've got a map, I'm looking at a photo.
Okay, where it says C2?
Yes.
Okay, there's a little curved-out piece of property.
That's your place?
I own that to the canal.
Oh, okay.
It's two parcels.
It's two parcels.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
I have a quick question. Are you farming that property? Is it, or just your residence? I'm sorry, this probably tells me, but I'm not...
Okay, it's, it's two properties. One was a, one was an acre and a third, which is where my home, where I have my horse, my animals. It is under the AE20 specifications, a small residential rural property. Everything out there, around it, is under that category. So, yeah, I, I, I have a horse, I have some animals, and my, my residence. And the same thing goes, all of that property that's listed there is AE20. It's AE20 all the way back to the end of the road, it's AE20 to the, to the west of it.
Well, now that I found the map, it appears to have, is it, is it fruit trees that you have there?
Hmm.
Trees on the property, or...
No, there's some old, some old walnut trees there. Basically, I have horse paddock.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, others wishing to testify? I have Antonio Treheal. Welcome, Mr. Treheal. Just need your, your name and address for the record, sir.
Antonio V. Treheal, and I live at 16262 Avenue 296. And that's just a little, about 100 feet past Mr. Schmal. I think he summed it up quite a bit. Exactly what I'm going to do is just add, there's another business down the road that's closed too. So, there's two businesses closed on 296. The only one that's still active is Hellwigs. And that road on 296 where it makes the curb, I've lived there 31 years, and the traffic has increased at least 30 times more than when I first moved there. And, and as soon as you make a, a right turn, cars go about 70, 75 miles around, right through that overpass. And like I said, there's been quite a few accidents. I've had about 30 accidents at the T intersection where it comes right over the overpass. So, I, that's been a hazard, especially when it gets foggy. There's been a lot more. But then, when you did have the trucks at the carpet place that closed down, and the Hellwigs, the trucks come across 296, and they block the road, and some of these people that come down through that 296 do not stop, they just go right around the double line. So, there's a hazard there, and the traffic problem is tremendous. The other problem is that, and one of those pictories they showed in the color slide, they, they put a road down there, and they use it as a drag strip. And when they were drag stripping on that 14 acres, all the people stopped, why does, to look and see who was racing the dragsters on, on Sunday morning? And you could see all the traffic just pile up on 296. So, that's trying to tell you that, that's when, that's probably some of the things that's going to happen in the future, when you do put something there. And another important thing is the water table. The water table is sinking. It's going down lower and lower, and most of us, if we have to invest in, in, in digging, digging deeper for the wells, it's going to cost us $10,000 to $15,000. So, we can't, most of us can't afford that now. So, that's the only thing I wanted to add. Is there any questions?
Thank you. Okay, anybody else wishing to address the board? Ms. Stever?
Yes, good morning, all. Madam Chair and members of Board of Supervisors, good morning. My name's Tricia Stever. I represent the Tulare County Farm Bureau, P.O. Box 748, Visalia, California, 93279. I submitted a letter for the record to your clerk yesterday, and I just wanted to verify that you have that information in front of you. Thank you very much. So, I will keep my remarks very brief. Mr. Canvasser did approach the Tulare County Farm Bureau, and I want to commend him and thank him formally for taking that action to contact Farm Bureau. Often, Farm Bureau becomes aware of these issues merely by way of issues with neighbors and individual property owners that are members of our Farm Bureau. And we were at the hearing where this was a, a joint filing between two different applicants, and we recognized that those matters have now been separated, and this individual's being asked for consideration today, and then this matter will be back before you for another parcel in question a couple of weeks from now. Even with Mr. Canvasser's good-faith efforts to contact the Farm Bureau and learn more about our position statement, our membership informed me, and our land use committee met on October 30th, that they still request that we oppose this on the merits that have been presented by way of the Planning Commission's resolution. The committee met on October 30th and heard comments from members and property owners, as well as Mr. Canvasser and the applicant that he represents. And in regards to this, we, we still believe that this is in conflict with not only Farm Bureau's land use policies, but also Tulare County General Plan land use element for the Farmersville area's land use plan. We do purport that this is a non-contiguous leapfrog-type development, which will convert AE20 farmland to other non-agricultural uses, and will potentially encourage the premature conversion of land surrounding that area, and potentially create a nuisance or an incompatible use with agricultural practices. And our members enumerated some of those concerns to Mr. Canvasser last week, and identified that there is an inventory of available commercially-zoned property within the urban development boundary for the city of Farmersville, which we recommend should be fully utilized for this type of new development, prior to land within the county's jurisdiction being converted. So, we agree with the Planning Commission's findings and their denial for the request based on the information that was provided in Resolutions 8372 and 8373, and thank you for the opportunity to comment on this matter.
Thank you. Hi Shirley.
Madam Chairman, Board, hope you're doing well today, Mrs. Conway. I'm Shirley Kirkpatrick. I live at 23114 Carson Avenue, Exeter. I'm here as a private citizen today, but you'll also know me as a longtime Planning Commissioner. And we don't ordinarily come and advocate a position. I don't think I've ever been here on an issue in my 20 years. But since I'm a lame duck, and I, this, this is an issue that's really dear to my heart, and I feel passionate about it, I would like to speak to you and ask for you to deny this request for the, whatever it is, the denial of the Planning Commission. Planning Commission's vote was unanimous, 7 zip. And it wasn't a matter of being confused with the other small parcel, that is equally as bad, but for a very many number of reasons you've already heard. And the main one, kind of to me, which really struck right away, was if Lafco, Lafco that approves everything that comes before it, says no to this, why should you say yes? And there are tons of properties already zoned for this purpose. And I'm surprised that Farmersville is not here this morning, because the Farmersville City Manager thanked me profusely as a member of the Planning Commission for turning this down. They have, and I think possibly there's been some change in the last few years, they have, would prefer that their industrial, commercial-type properties go south of Highway 198 now, and they have some property set up for that. A previous board also put a planned development, PDA zoning on the old Drive-In Theater property, which is only a mile to the west. That is perfect for this type of thing. The Kimball Toppers unit sits there vacant, with windows being broken there at Farmersville curb, which would be an ideal spot for a tractor company. But I think if you, if you approve this zone change and, and general plan amendments, in my 20 years of being a Commissioner, making changes to the general plan on a property, property-by-property basis is the worst use of planning that you could do. Couple of other things, it's growth-inducing, it's, it creates sprawl, it flutters up Highway 198 even more, and we ought to reserve that for our, our highway to the Sierra. It does not meet the new state standards under SB 375 or AB 32, which you'll, 375 would give you some benefits, would give you some brownie points if you didn't do it. I think that's about all. Oh, I, I just wanted to remind you that this was a unanimous decision by the Planning Commission. The last time the Board overturned a unanimous decision by the Planning Commission, we got left with a port-a-potty site. And I think you'll all agree, that's just kind of a, not a good thing. And, but that was a previous board, and you are the current board, and I just hope you'll do the right thing. Thank you.
Shirley. Okay, anyone else wishing to testify this morning? I did have one name, but I, it's Michelle Mayer, but I think it indicated that Mr. Schmal would be presenting on Michelle's behalf, if she's even still here. Okay, well, there's no... You're back? Oh, we have it too. Okay, thank you. All right, then I will close the public hearing, or testimony part, and bring it back to the Board for discussion and possible action. Supervisor Sheedah?
Very obvious that this use is not compatible at this point in time with the surrounding areas that are zoned AE20. And I would move to uphold the Planning Commission and deny this request.
I would second that.
Okay, further discussion, or...
Let's make one quick comment.
Yeah, I have one too, yes, go ahead.
Several comments have been made about water tables dropping. If you were to put this type of development on this property, it'd probably use about a third of the water. And there are, and a statement was made about having 1,000 people on a piece of property this side, that would be, you'd be able to stand there and touch everybody standing next to you, so that, that's an unreasonable statement to make. But, I mean, putting a, you know, a, a development like this, I think sooner or later is probably inevitable. I think that's the plans that the city of Farmersville has. And so, you know, I, I don't know that I, you know, I'm a little undecided on this one, because I, I know, I don't know how long it's going to take them, but the city of Farmersville is going to annex that property. They are going to move forward with adding that into their industrial area. So, I have a, I'm mixed feelings here.
Can I respond? If you take Farmersville Boulevard into the main part of town, there's a lot of undeveloped land in that stretch. Post, industrial park and retail park is on the south side of 198, which they have just gone through the initial planning stuff. So, I, I don't doubt someday that this will be in the sphere of influence annexed to Farmersville, but that day may be a few years off.
Well, I agree, that's why I have mixed emotions, because a, a lot of the land you're talking about is, is being actively farmed, as we sit here today. talking about is being actively farmed as we sit here today. So...
You know, I would, I had similar thoughts, especially when you look at the map. And there's, you know, I personally think there's compelling reasons on both sides. But one argument that is interesting to me is that, well, there's other properties available. However, the property owner may not own them. So, the other properties is something that doesn't, you know, at least in my mind. There's a whole lot of other things that I am considering, but the fact that there's other available property, I mean, the property owner doesn't own those, that'd be the, that's like any of us. You know, there's always other property available, but it may not pertain to the property that we own.
Madam Chairman, I share some of my colleagues' concerns, Mr. Cox. When I look at this property, it's hard for me to say this is property that needs to be preserved for agricultural purposes. It's not being farmed. It hasn't been farmed. Under our Rural Value Lands Plan, if this was stuck out in the middle of nowhere, not even close to a city, it would be in the gray area of sixteen points, which would give the discretion of the Board to determine this property could have alternative uses. And I look at it right adjacent to 198. You've got a natural dividing line because of the canal that runs along the back end of the property. The proposed development plan, as we see it here, has the development adjacent to 198, away from the agricultural property. In other words, there are lots of things that can be done from a design standpoint to protect other agricultural interests around the area and allow this property to have an alternative use. When you look at the parcel owners that are around there, they're AE-20, but my goodness, one-acre parcels, two-acre parcels, three-acre parcels, those are miszoned. They're zoned at AE-20, but they're not AE-20 parcels. They're not even close to twenty-acre parcels. So, I understand the Farm Bureau's position. I only wish they could be a little bit more discriminating. One of the things I learned in law school is all property is unique. And that's the reason why we have to look at property parcel by parcel. This property, if it were out in the middle of actively farmed ag property, it would be a slam dunk. I would agree, you know, there's no question that this property needs to be left in agriculture. But when you look at the location of this property, the proximity to 198, the off-ramps, the canal that works on the back end of the property, the strange configuration of this property, it would be, this would not be an easy piece of property to farm in its current configuration. It is the highest and best use of this property, agriculture. I doubt that it really is. You know, and I, you know, it's easy to stop things in this world, but I really wish the Farm Bureau would be a little bit more sensitive of the idea. There is farm property worth fighting over, and there's farm, and there's property which I question whether it should be fought over. Right now, in my district, my ag interests are in serious, serious financial condition. People are selling their ranches. They're going out of business. And farm properties are, we're not running out of farm property in Tulare County today, I can tell you that. And I just question whether this particular parcel is worth fighting over from an agricultural standpoint, because I just don't see this as being agricultural property. So, that's where I struggle with, and the only reason farm, the only reason Farmersville has not taken in this property is the difficulty of providing services. Getting across 198 to provide water and sewer, that's the difficulty. That's the reason why they're not able to annex this property currently. And it'll be very expensive for them to do that in the future. And I believe that's why they've been supportive, notwithstanding the comments that were made this morning. I mean, we have a letter from them, or there's, in our report, we have a statement that says Farmersville supports this particular project with some limitations. So, those are my comments. I can understand how it goes either way. I just really struggle with this piece of property and its unique situation and saying we've got to keep this for agricultural purposes.
Now, I've been known to vote against a church, a Moose's Lodge, because I believe they did not belong out in an area of active agriculture. This individual decided not to farm that property. That's his decision. But his neighbors are farming their properties. And this isn't indifferent than the piece of property on Shirk and 198 that hasn't been farmed for years because the owner did not intend to buy that land to farm. He held it for development purposes. That's perfectly good farmland, but the owner decided not to farm it. So, all of a sudden, because a guy decides not to farm his property in the middle of an area which has a lot of agricultural around it, which impacts his neighbors, I just have, I'm not going to make an exception for someone who is not using the land to his best ability that it has today and has had in the past years. This land obviously has been held for development. It really does pose a problem for active farmers to have commercial developments in their radius, especially if you're a walnut grower, which there are a lot of nuts in this area. The dust problems, the complaints that you get, it does crimp. Even though we have the ordinance about the right to farm, it doesn't stop the complaints coming in from people who are trying to farm around the perimeter of this property. We've already looked at moving back to the west, what we've done with the scenic corridor, as allowing a lot of commercial development or industrial development, which may not, should not have even been there in today's climate, or in my personal opinion, that should have been moved to Visalia, or should have been moved to other existing areas that have existing infrastructure.
Thank God we're not having that discussion today.
No, but you just drive down the road, and we're going to create more of it. You know, I think its best use in the future may be non-agricultural, but you have a lot of other alternative land to be used for non-agricultural purposes. So, that's my soapbox.
It's a dilemma. I mean, I believe that eventually this will change. I mean, I'm certainly aware of the Planning Commission's wishes and, you know, our statement that, you know, we're an agriculture community. But, you know, on the other hand, I agree with some of the points made by Supervisor Worthley, you know, about uniqueness of the property and all that goes into it. But that being said, well, then, if we're through discussing this, I do have a motion and a second out there. So, we're going to have to push a button. Or two buttons, or however many you want to push.
Because I never push it. It's a no vote.
Okay.
I don't know why it's not working.
Well, for today, it passes.
Wasn't yours stuck last week?
It's been so long since I pushed it, I don't know.
Is that what it is? We didn't even realize it didn't work.
Mine broke last week.
But verbally, or...
Verbal answer, no.
It's a verbal no vote. So, the motion passes with a margin of three to two. I'm sure someday that will, this will be back.
Just one comment, Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I will express, share my ignorance this morning. I learned something today. Of course, I hope I learn something every day. But I was of the, always of the impression that when we gave, when we entered into contracts, the Williams-Schmitz contracts, that the subvention we got from the state of California was dollar-for-dollar what we lost. I learned today that for giving up $25,000 of property tax, we get a $1,000 subvention. Is that what I heard correctly today? $1,000 or $2,000 subvention?
I'm not sure of the exact number. I'm not sure if staff is still here. It was less than the, certainly not one for one.
It was a significant amount reduced from what we forego. When we look at the discussion we just had earlier today about having enough money to pay our employees and be competitive in the marketplace, and we just forgave $27,000 of taxes in support of agriculture, it behooves us to look at other opportunities to try to regain some of that tax revenue where we have the opportunities to do so. And I think that...
Valid point.
Needs to be part of our policy looking forward in the future about how do we regain some of those lost taxes.
Well, speaking of item two, Supervisor, I have some new information, and actually, we need to move back to those. And we just need to revote.
Madam Chair, I'd like to apologize. When you asked the question, Supervisor Worthley, regarding your personal interest, and I answered you on the fly, so to speak. I did then do some further research, and while it's not entirely clear, I think for your protection, we should go back, revote this item, and separate out, you could certainly vote on any of the parcels that don't, aren't across the street from you.
I'm sure if I might then make a motion as to item two, to approve all of the requested 01, 02, 03 contracts, accepting out the Capheim Farms, then I would move to accept those.
Okay. Need a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Ennis, for considering one, two, and three, or reconsidering. Okay.
And I will accuse myself from the other one.
Thank you, Supervisor. We'll now consider 004.
I move to accept Capheim property.
All right.
Second.
Motion and a second. Cast your votes, please. That vote passes three to one with one abstention. I hope I said that right. I hope we did that right.
No, he did not abstain. He did not participate in any way.
All right. It wasn't an abstention. It was a total, total recusement. I'm getting rum done here. Okay. We still have another item to consider, and that's item 18. Mr. Fussell, is this your item?
Yes, it is, ma'am.
By default or by choice?
Brett Fussell, Assistant Director for the Engineering Branch with the Resource Management Agency. And the item before you this morning is two parts. One is to receive and file a report that was prepared by HF and H Consultants regarding refuse and construction vehicle impact analysis onto our road system. And more importantly, staff is looking for direction from the Board as to where you would like us to proceed, if at all, with implementing any of the concepts that are identified in the report. What we asked HF and H to do was to take a look at and analyze the impact of solid waste, recycling, and yard waste collection vehicles, along with construction-related vehicles on road maintenance costs in the county of Tulare. They identified two objectives of the study. The first was to estimate the county's average annual expenditures for payment-related road maintenance, net gas tax apportionments, and then attribute those to refuse vehicles, construction vehicles, other trucks and automobiles, and then to allocate the average annual expenditures based upon the percentage of impact from refuse vehicles and construction vehicles, other trucks and automobiles. What the report found was that the, looking at an average annual expenditure in the road fund from July 1st, 2002 through June 30th, 2007, was about a little over $12 million per year over that five-year fiscal year period. And that refuse vehicles account for approximately 8.3%, and construction vehicles account for approximately 23.6% of the total impact on the road system. Using those percentages and the $12 million number identified before, one would identify that the refuse trucks attribute to about a million dollars' worth of maintenance effort, and construction vehicles contribute about almost $3 million to the road maintenance cost. In addition, if you were to take a look at other trucks, which account for a large percentage of the truck traffic on the road, I believe it's in excess of 60%, those amounts would be $8.2 million and $193,000 for just general automobiles. So, with that information, staff would respond to any questions that the Board may have. And again, we're looking for direction, if any, as to how you would like to proceed with the information in this study.
Madam Chair, if I may, just briefly, I'd asked, met with staff about three and a half years ago and asked if we had this type of information, just as we were looking at roads and impact fees. This was pre-Measure R when we had this discussion. One of my main concerns was, hey, how are we going to fix our roads and where are we going to get the money to do it? So, I'd asked staff to look and see if they had this information. They didn't. So, they commissioned this study. So, I don't know that we need to go anywhere with this right now, given we have Measure R, but this is valuable information as we start looking at our impact fee program, because there are obvious impacts at the tune of $12 million a year, just because of trucks driving on the roads and taking trash to our landfills. So, I don't know that it needs to go any further than this. The request is to receive it and file it, and I would make the motion to do that.
Second.
Okay. Motion, second. Cast your votes, please.
Thank you, Board.
Mr. Fussell, before you leave...
Yes, sir.
The construction-related activities, would that include trucks that are hauling gravel? Are they included in that, or are they in the other sixty-some percent?
No, that's a very good question. My guess is they're probably included in the other. I think the intent was to take a look at vehicles related to building something through the issuance of a building permit. You actually would be like a concrete truck delivering the concrete for the slab, the flatbed, delivering the lumber, those kinds of vehicles.
Which would then include construction costs that are born from buildings built in cities where they travel on county roads to bring materials.
And that would be, the difficulty in this is we would have no mechanism directly to assess that. We would only be able to assess through our building permit process if the Board were to elect, proceed down that path.
Thanks. This is just a good tool as we move towards our impact fees, especially in the transportation area.
Thank you again, Board.
Our impact fees are yours, Supervisor.
County's impact fees, Supervisor.
Thank you. All right. Public comments is next on our agenda. Anyone wishing to address the Board on items that are purview but not on the agenda. Seeing, hearing none, we'll move to Board Supervisors' Matters. Supervisor Ennis?
I have nothing to say today.
Supervisor Sheedah?
I forgot to mention something about a month ago. It just came to me in your moment.
It's timely.
But remember, we voted to put a cell tower in, overrode staff's recommendation on Highway 198 up by the lake. When I was up there on the hidden fire, the command staff was at Horseshoe Campground, Horse Creek Campground, and that cell tower came very handy, because it provided all the rising users an outlet during that fire. So, I just wanted to point that out, that it does have a public safety aspect to why we put this up, cell tower in.
Thank you, Supervisor.
This Friday, I want to invite you all to up to District Four for the groundbreaking ceremonies on Avenue 416, Road 56. It's groundbreaking. It's already been broken for some time, but anyway, you'll join us.
Great. Thank you, Supervisor Cox.
Not today.
Okay. I have nothing. Council, we have need to go to closed session?
We do, Madam Chair. We have item, excuse me, item A is off agenda. We have items B through H. And there was no closed session on the addendum. So, just those matters. I do not anticipate any announcement. Oh, well, no, I take that back. I may have an announcement.
Okay. With that, thank you, everyone, for being...
Announcement out of closed session today, Tuesday, November 4th, 2008, by County Council Kathleen Bales-Lang. In the matter of item D on the Board's closed session agenda, County of Tulare versus Judicial Counsel et al., Sacramento County Case Number 07AS00376. The Board voted to authorize, excuse me, the Board voted to seek appellate review on motion of Supervisor Cox, seconded by Supervisor Worthley on a unanimous vote. There are no other announcements.
Thank you.